Twenty second, okay. Workshop, planning board workshop, May 22nd. Thank you, thank you Vivian. Virginia?
Yes.
I just renamed it. Okay.
Twenty two. We've got some critical habitat maps we've got in because the state wants us to hide those, but we'll have them for resources so people can't find out where all the deer are sleeping.
Exactly. Where the bear are.
Where the bear are. I was hoping just to follow up on the Mike Morris thing to catch up to where you guys got. I got taken away for mapping issues after the last time. I'm hoping to make a site line with them coming soon, just so Mike will be familiar with the site as well too. We've got some other issues out there dealing with too. Dennis, you gonna need another body count? Just go here, nineteen twenty? How are the other town ordinances looking?
Not that much different than us at all. I mean, every now and then you see something that, I mean, I would say immediately, oh, they've had an issue with this.
Yes, yeah.
And they've got it nailed down.
Yep.
But far less, you know, maybe one out of twenty.
Yeah.
That, you know, they've had an issue and it's normally tightening things up to the point that nobody in any of the circles of the ends that might be touching a particular issue can put their own spin on it.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, this department can't say, oh, but it means this. That department can't say, but we think it's this.
Well, like you said, when you start reading it, it's like, oh, they had a run on tattoo files. Because now there's a big section on body piercing and tattoos.
Right, right.
They love this.
Exactly. And they tighten it up and it really is, you know, very clear and very precise. And it frankly, it looks like it keeps them on a court.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, it keeps them on a court.
I don't know why I had that.
I don't know either. I'm starting to say, okay.
You had hers?
I said, that was my brain.
And then that's not a problem.
No, no.
Because I knew that.
Well, they do have names on them.
Yeah, they have names on them.
That's Brenda's doing.
Yes.
So when this happens?
Yes.
Listen, I told you so.
Yeah.
I know we had talked goats and chicken ordinances a little while ago, but the ones, the issue that brought that to light, they've all moved out of town. All goats and chickens moving out of town.
Really?
Yeah.
Huh. I was so looking forward, fresh goat cheese.
I'm sure somebody has something.
I'm sure they do.
That reminds me of an issue we had with one of our embryes that was having vandalism.
Yeah.
And the action general was visiting one day and asked the custodian, how's the vandalism problem going? And the guy says, oh, he grew up in Mofale.
Yeah, that's how it happens.
That's it. Um, where had you?
MEC six, page two, top, page two. Who's an attempt to base the market name on a structure that existed five years prior to, over a five year period? So what we were looking for there is the year before or the day before, somebody comes in to relocate a structure, they put a subject system right behind it, a garage. We were looking at a five year window for that. If it's in the market name, but I don't have a structure over five years probably before.
Was?
I have a note here that says stay with the five years.
Yeah, definitely stay with it, yeah.
Yeah. That's exactly what I, um...
So I think that looks clean good. So what else happened with that change?
Right.
Apparently, oh, seven's after eight. Delete this as an entirety. To the highest thing.
Well, we just crossed that out.
Yep.
You were gone, we just said gone.
Yeah, agree.
Already gone.
Yeah.
Same with line management goals.
Yeah. And footnotes, yeah, line management. But after that, we did keep footnote one in there because of resource protected.
It should be amended to NA or delete the entirety. Are you talking MEC eight?
No.
Oh, footnote.
Footnote.
Let me see, eleven.
Eleven.
I don't know where that applies.
Well, that's hard to see.
Yeah, it's not in, it's not in those areas of the land use chart, it's in someone's else. Clear and removal of vegetation.
I think it's, it's, um...
Page seventeen, I've got it.
Okay, but if you go up here, you'll see two thirds of the way down. There's not, halfway down. The, and I don't know if that's where they're talking about tributaries and requiring setbacks and bodies of water and that sort of thing.
And removal of vegetation activity, other than to, so it's not allowed in resource protection.
It's just sort of floating there.
I see what he's saying. So if it's RP, there shouldn't be anything out there, so it's, the safety hazards aren't an issue. Because it's supposed to be in the middle of the forest.
Right.
So, and again, this would be a twenty twenty change. And some comment about this would be deleted. I think we've pulled most of this stuff around twenty nineteen.
Right.
Uh, this may be a photograph of what we have. You found a typo.
Yeah. Well, if you look at structure.
Yeah.
Structure?
It's a structure?
Yes.
I think that's the Eastern European pronunciation.
Yeah, I think so. That's a typo, I think that can be fixed at any time. When we go to reprint, we'll make sure that's done at that time.
Right.
So what did we decide on the footnote one?
Yeah, what did we decide on the footnote?
Um, it should read in the resource protection that it's not allowed. So he's saying the safety hazards, you're not supposed to be pulling out RP. So I've got that highlighted and we'll take a look at it in twenty twenty to twenty twenty.
Okay.
Thirteen?
What, go back to ten, please?
Yep.
That's, that's gone.
Yep. Hopefully seventy.
Yep. Eight, yeah, seven, eight, nine, ten.
Nine blended in there. We didn't catch that. And hopefully, and it seems like it's just been staffing changes at the Forest Service where they were all for, all the states getting onto one page, now it's not being as well received.
Now, this one, we wondered on thirteenth. If we should, you know, adding footprint. And again, is that just putting in a word?
So the aim is to avoid conflict, it says.
Remember, we had talked about, because we had had a best practical location come in where the fellow was putting his house, piece of cake thing, and we, we had it because he was putting in, the roof extended. And did he have to put in new posts or whatever?
And the debt and all that. It was quite a conversation with all that.
It was quite a conversation.
What's the final issue? What is the footprint?
And the foot, well, if that, if that landed on the ground, that's the footprint. If the roof landed on the ground, that's the footprint. No matter if there was an overhang all the way.
Right, because we had to debate that night.
We did.
There really wasn't a, I mean, it was a decision made, but it...
If I remember, we asked him to just pull it back.
Yeah.
A little bit.
But it wasn't clear.
No.
And when we let him replace what they had.
Yeah, yeah. What's tough is, this is shoreline zoning verbiage.
Yeah.
And the toughest part is the second sentences where it's exclusive, can't leave portions of a building, which that conflicts with another section here where we're talking structures, is everything eaves, overhangs. Because if you can't leave a foot, the next thing, they'll have a ten foot deck, can't leave it out over.
Right.
We did get into this with a court case and I was able to convince the judge, that's shoreline verbiage. There was another spot that contradicted it and it says the more stringent will apply. So we'll take a look at changing that definition of footprint when the time comes. Looking into that a little bit more.
So the note we had was, yes, address this.
Yes, address this.
That's exactly what I note said.
Yeah. Now you can have a cantilever twenty feet out over the water.
Exactly.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Uh, MEC fourteen, delete? We're on a roll between the last few years, we've deleted several pages of zoning versus adding regulation.
But was your delete in one?
Fourteen.
Fourteen.
Bureau of Forestry.
Yep, yep, just the definition of it. And again, that's how picky that they want to be is everything. If you even relate to them, you need to get rid of it. So we'll look at the definition of campground as well too.
Yeah, we had, we had said we should look at the DEP definition.
Or just refer to it.
Or refer to it.
Yeah.
Yeah, in fact, that's what I said, refer to DEP. That's my note.
The most you worry will get them.
Yeah, because our book says, a premises established for overnight use for the purpose of temporary camping and for which a fee is charged. Then I'd want to look at the definition of premises. Because when I hear the word premises, I think of something.
Other than just the building?
Yeah.
It's wider mistake.
It's what's there.
Yeah.
So according to this, you could have a campground without, if you don't charge?
Well, I don't know.
Again, well, it says, and for where a fee is charged.
But if you, what if you don't charge it, you still have a campground.
According to this, it wouldn't be a campground anymore. Because you're not charging fees.
It wouldn't be a campground.
So maybe the DEP definition addresses that.
Yeah, refer to DEP definition. Well, I'll tell you, Marion Webster had a hell of a job.
Oh, I know. So am I.
I know.
Cross sectional area. Is there a note for that one, that last one?
Um, it's on the next page.
I just gave the word.
Delete in order to become an option one.
Yeah.
And sixteen and seventeen are delete. Eighteen's delete, nineteen and twenty.
Delete, delete, delete.
Yeah. But back to what campground is.
Any area or track of lane to accommodate two or more parties in a temporary living quarters, including but not limited to tents, recreation vehicles, shelters.
Much different from our definition.
Yeah.
Does it say anything about a fee?
No. Because I think sometimes you look at things, goats and chickens, are you selling it? If you're selling it, that's huge. So we do have an area for individual private campsite, is one camper every twenty thousand square feet of use. So if you have a camp and a camper, you'd need forty thousand square feet for that. So that's similar to what he's referring to is getting it out of the individual private campsite area.
So hence you don't have your cousin's brother on your stepfather's side. Put his RV.
Exactly.
In your driveway.
A weekend, the week, the next weekend and it's going, we're not going to have the time to chase you. But as you know, going down Yar Road, there were several on there that.
Yeah.
Are on the...
On the edge, on the cross.
Yeah, yeah.
So the campground, we're just going to leave it?
Yeah, I've got it. Yep, yep, we'll update that terminology, we'll bring that verbiage in. I think we'll pick a couple of other towns too, just to see if they've got a better definition, that we like something or... Probably Wells would be a good one. I heard they've got the most obvious purse cubic mile, square mile and the state.
Sheba down the road and it's unbelievable. Either of you have Wells?
That's one I got.
I think you might.
Yeah, I think it is.
Look up campgrounds there. This is Berwick's, identical to DEP, right out of the book.
Yeah, yeah. And it's funny, a lot of that stuff, even when you look at the types that from the older boilerplate ordinances, it's like...
Cut paste.
Cut paste. That was before cut paste, that was copy. So sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, twenty, deleting, deleting, deleting.
Yeah.
And I think most of this we have for this year's warning to be deleted.
I think so.
You know, Hollis had inserted the verbiage for which a fee is charged in the middle of that definition.
Yeah.
So they're limiting themselves.
Yeah. Well, it's opening the door for somebody to argue. It's a donation, it's not a fee. You see that at a lot of...
Oh, is that right? Oh, yeah.
Fundraiser type things or...
For church runs, Bible campground, why don't school campground?
Joyce, I don't have that stock.
You don't have Wells?
I have Wells.
Okay, but nothing under definitions?
No definitions, unless, unless you consider. That's what was given to it.
Oh, I think those are just applications. Yeah, to tweak our site plan.
We're going to take these away from you.
All right.
Do you mind?
No, it's all right.
Because knowing you, you'll become the expert on those applications.
The truth, the only thing I was looking for, I was looking in there for the definition.
Yeah.
Twenty one, we're adding the verbiage boathouse that is not functionally dependent water use. This area.
And then...
Twenty two's deleted.
So on twenty one, you were going to analyze the verbiage and simplify it to only apply to acting?
Uh, for twenty one, we're going to bring in some verbiage about a boathouse not being functionally dependent water use. It's not permitted now, but what we have is some people that want to do major renovations to their boathouses. And once you remove it more than fifty percent, it comes in front of you guys for relocation.
Right.
Where it's not a functionally dependent water use, you guys may move it to the other side of the house. Basically, it's a shed down in the water.
Right.
That's how the state. If it's a commercial marina, that's totally different. Now it's a, it's a commercial operation.
I was thinking that one there, we already addressed.
Twenty one?
Yeah, because we had the conversation about the fish mining facility.
Yeah, yeah. We've kind of set it up as a policy because of the DEP telling us that. He's just saying, you know, add, add boathouse in that definition, which isn't a bad idea.
Right. And I think the biggest thing that we see around here are retaining walls.
Yes.
I mean, every spring.
Yep. The other thing we're looking at also were generators.
Yeah.
That, they need a place to go and sometimes it's, you know, if there's no reasonable alternative, we'll look at the lake side of the house, but, so I'm thinking of something along the word of appliance, that it's actually an appliance, not a structure. The problems we were having in the eighties and nineties were the satellite dishes that were about eight feet wide and down by the water. Now it's hot tubs that are kind of, they're clearly, those aren't necessary, especially now the satellite dishes have shrunk. But bringing in an appliance.
Yeah, appliance kind of...
For the generator, generator and mini splits.
But does that mean I can put a central kitchen down there?
No.
It's an appliance, it's a sink and stove.
We're going to have a definition of appliance within the structure.
But I really, I've got a nice place.
Or a generator, definition of generator or something like that. Somehow, you want to apply common sense to it, that if there is no reasonable alternative.
Right, right.
And for some reason, I did have somebody and sometimes it's hard because we don't want to draw a site plan for a generator all the time, but we, if it's in the shoreline, we do, we look for one. We had one, it was on Luna Pond and I went up to look at it and it was between the deck and the lake. And first thing is, they exercise every week, it echoes across the lake, it's down by the water. And I'm like, son of a bitch. And I hold on.
It has a fuel source.
It has a fuel source, you duck the dirt and it sticks out and it's really big. I looked at the site plant, showed it up by the road. I'm like, what happened? Like, well, and the owner took the hit for it and they picked it up and moved it. The site plant saved me on that or it would have been much hotter. We did get a call today, it was a company out of Portland, wanted to know setbacks for generators down by the water and stuff.
The word appliance, and I, I get quite a bit of feedback on the fire button. Somebody on the fire button, because they said they needed new appliance, money for new appliances. So I said, well, you store a refrigerator? And I was told that if I knew anything all about the fire button, that it's something they throw out to get water easier out of the lake or something.
Yeah.
I haven't heard that terminology before.
And I said, well, I never thought that would be appliance, well, you know, what you call it?
I would call it a pump.
Nobody's supposed to make it faster or something, I, I don't know. But I'm just nervous about the word appliance.
Yeah, so we're trying to find a definition.
It sounds too general.
Yeah, that's...
I mean, why wouldn't you, why wouldn't you use just a generator?
The word generator. I mean, when you think of, I mean, right.
Maybe it's a definition of generator and that would be, the generator was considered an appliance for setback and needs to be put in a reasonable location determined prior to blah, blah, blah.
Because if that, if that's an appliance, what is a propane tank?
Uh, we did the same with the propane tank. We've got one going, it's an underground going maybe forty-five, fifty feet away from the lake. They were at twenty twenty-five, we've got them back further. To get back further, they would have to dig through the town driveway, through two four foot retaining walls and then to be up by the street. And of course, with the propane tank, somebody has to fill that all the time. So they want that closer to as well too. But appliances, it's dry as refrigerators, coffee makers. So it keeps, you know, that's the general, when you say appliances, that's what I'm like. Kitchen appliances and stuff like that.
So you need to specify, if you talk to generators, you say generators.
Exactly, so maybe it's a definition of the generator for setback reasons.
Yeah, she gets it off.
Yeah, well, that's okay. We'll make her...
Yeah. Things go much easier that way, right?
Yeah.
Land Management Road, I'm sure we're pulling that out to be an option one town. This is pretty good, most of it we're just pulling out.
It really, there's a lot that...
Oh, I see, yeah.
Okay, the, where are you, downstream?
Uh, twenty seven. Pulling the car out of lot coverage, which would be coverage lot, how it's set up.
Exactly.
Yeah.
We had a note in there, last time we discussed this, to add driveways.
Right.
Is that something that makes sense?
That's been something that, with different ones that Gavin's brought up quite a few times. Is that part of a lot coverage on?
We've always looked at it, all I need is the last three words, non-vegetated surface.
Yeah.
If it's not vegetated, it's not. So sometimes somebody will be saying, yeah, but it's not paved. Yeah, but it's not vegetated either. And quite often, say there, your maximum lot coverage is twenty percent. Say they come in and they're at forty percent and they're trying to put on a twenty by twenty addition. You can build the twenty by twenty, but you have to re-vegetate four hundred square feet. So you come back, you're still way over on your lot coverage, but it's no worse. And you redo some re-vegetation area. If it's paved, it's going to be a lot hotter than dirt.
So that's fine.
So it's a compromise that is, it's a good compromise.
Yeah, he's thinking, getting the word driveway in there. And of course, he's looking at it as somebody sitting at home, reading the ordinance and trying to figure out the permitting. And most of them, they have no idea, they don't look into it that in depth and they just want to, what do you want?
Right, right.
So that's not bad.
So that gets where he wants to go?
No, it's throwing it in there that it's really, it's not vegetated. Yeah, your driveway, so parking lot is in there and that's state verbiage. Because we don't have very many parking lots, but we do have, everybody's got a driveway. So I've got that one picked up, twenty eight, we're deleting.
What?
Twenty nine.
What constitutes just, what constitutes a driveway? How many feet? How many feet is a driveway before we become a parking lot?
I think parking lot, I think commercial.
Okay, you said that's...
Would be my initial thought.
Yeah.
I think driveway is going to be an entrance from the road to the...
To a private home or whatever. Or the church.
Driveway outside of the shoreline zone, vehicular accessway serving two dwelling units or less. Within the shoreline zone, it's less than five hundred feet in length, serving two dwelling units, two dwelling units. So shoreline zone's limited that down to five hundred feet. Once your driveway is more than five hundred feet in the shoreline zone, then it's going to be something else, which I would probably say is a road. I did not know that.
That's interesting, because the last thing that we did was Thursday. I mean, that, that little camp, right? It was, there was quite a road to get to that.
Um, it may have looked it in the picture, but I bet it was less than a hundred by the time they pulled the camp back.
Really?
Hundred or so, yeah.
Looked quite a bit up.
Yeah, a lot of it was just driving down into the place, so...
Yeah.
So where did the five hundred feet of driveway come from?
That's shoreline zone from the DEP. Somebody's come up with a good number that seemed reasonable and...
So then it's a road if it's more than five hundred feet long?
I would have to ask him, what, if your driveway is more than five hundred, what is it?
A roadway?
And then if it's a road, then you have to build it to a different standard, you need to do a driveway.
Right.
Usually when I see a long driveway, my main concern is fire truck access, which really is realistically propane truck, oil truck, that type of stuff.
Is it narrow and winding?
Well, that and does it have a good enough base that the truck's not going to sink out of sight for his truck in or? But, but usually once you're, most people are going to think my house is never going to burn down, but then realistically, I'm going to get an oil delivery every other month, but it's frozen. But then you got mud season and. Thirteen, thirty-one, that's getting deleted. Stream, they're looking for a stream definition.
I think we had written a note down, why don't we just refer to the state definition?
Yeah, refer to state definition.
Yeah, that talks about a gravel bottom and.
Remember there was a big discussion a few years ago, Cam, over the different streams?
Yeah.
In a brook, yeah. Free flowing value of water from an outlet from a great pond or confluence of two perennial streams as depicted by blue line in the most recent, oh, yeah, United States.
USGS seven point five.
I was just saying, now.
I think that's.
Body of water. I was just going to say, boy, it's almost closed in for invention. I'm going to go.
Oh.
So I had a class with the Army Corps of Engineers yesterday and I thought the DEP, and the DEP does exempt a lot of stuff for wetlands crossings and things, Army Corps of Engineers doesn't. So we'll be, we've got a few different, at my level, different projects we'll be looking at.
Again, Berwick uses the same thing that we have. But this, it says, this term shall also include Ferguson Brook, which is east of Alpine, you know, it runs through Hall's Pond between School Street and whatever, and Brook Pond, which is located. So they have some specific situations.
Yeah.
That they are, want to make sure are covered.
You know what it is, yeah.
And it's covered in that.
So the state's definition of a D, a stream just gets into, right after the topographical map, it says, if not available, then they have another resource, fifteen minute series. So that's the.
Oh, it says the same thing.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's easy. It's always great when you look at it and say, well, that shouldn't be very controversial.
Well, how about the, this is springs, spring fed. You know, it just comes out of the side ground.
Ground fed, groundwater.
And we've got one going on the side of Great East where the people are screaming because it's a vacant lot, but now a house is going in there. And everyone's screaming upset that it's wetlands and it's in a stream. And I'll try to explain to them, it's not jurisdictional wetlands. Basically, it's a drainage ditch because it bubbles out of the ground for a few months, but it doesn't have a mineral base bottom, it doesn't meet the definition of stream, so it doesn't, it's not a stream. It's a drainage ditch, so it doesn't apply. I don't even think it would apply for Army Corps of Engineers stuff, again, because it's not continuously flowing. Because Army Corps is really looking at how to get the habitat to move through culverts and things like that.
Oh, yeah.
Because as soon as you've got the culvert hanging six, eight, ten inches out of the water, just from the scouring, nothing can get upstream anymore and you're all done at that point there, so.
That's why they really want looking at the bottoms.
Yeah, they don't want.
They've been talking to some of the prefab manufactured people, they're starting to do those open bottom culverts, break down to a twenty-four inch, you know, replacing that size stuff.
They don't even want to, you know, slip line anything.
Yeah, yeah.
And, you know, the easiest way to do it, culverts, especially the large ones.
Yeah.
Slip line, but it doesn't give you any habitat.
I was thinking, when I was looking at this and this and that, the culvert on Wet Shore Drive.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I mean, because cost effective wise, a culvert's the cheapest thing, a slip line is very expensive.
Slip line for that one would probably be in the forty to sixty thousand dollar range. That's the one, we talked about it when, three of us went to the school, they had for that. And to do the right thing, as they like to, that's the word they use.
Yes, that's the right way to do it.
Which being ninety to one hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Now, that should last the right way, that would probably last you also ninety years.
Yeah.
With a slip line, you got thirty years.
Yeah.
And, well, that's.
Because you've always got the other option, too, that a culvert is going to be very difficult to get through with the boats. An open bottom box culvert, you're going to get a lot bigger boats through.
Well, then that is it, the state put the boat ramp on the other side.
Yeah.
On the other side.
Yeah.
And as it is now, if it wasn't for neighbors, there'd be no party boats. Because they don't fit.
Yeah.
They just don't fit.
Which was.
Yeah, I mean.
Well thought out.
Wasn't, I mean, my boat is nineteen and a half foot, in buoy.
In buoy?
And, you know, the theory that there's always at least three feet of water.
Yeah, yeah.
I've had, I've gone in to check the water level and I've had to paddle out because I had the tip, the engine was, I mean, there's just, the fish finder was showing like eight inches.
Yeah, yeah.
And I don't like that sound.
Like your defibrillator.
No, I don't like that sound at all.
So when the state decided to go away with the bridge, or they had no bar, they put the culvert in?
Was that a bridge before or just a culvert?
It was a rickety old bridge, wasn't it, yeah?
Yeah, yeah.
And you get into the other thing with culverts, again, using Wet Shore as an example. You've got a very sharp left turn, left-hand turn going in, swing around, and it's almost like a reverse S going up. And there isn't any land that would take you in a straight line.
Yeah.
So, and you couldn't even make the culvert any wider, really.
Meaning how, just how it turns?
Just how it turns, so there's, the culvert thing is really, you know, maybe a nice little drawbridge, you know, could be a good option, but. But on that one, thirty-two, it's just referred to the state.
Yeah, yeah, structure, what they've added on at the state level, normally associated with service trucks as well as guides, guide anchors, temporary structures, temporary or permanent, located such as docked paddios and satellite dishes. Temporary structures, temporary or permanent, located such as decks, paddios and satellite dishes. Well, I think the satellite dishes, we love that, but.
Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what's said, just on the road practically.
Yeah.
So what's the state's shoreline zoning definition rate like?
So it's, oops. So it's the same thing, but on the end of it, they've added, the term includes structures, temporary or permanent, located such as decks, paddios and satellite dishes.
That's what we have right here. Turn right.
Oh. Wonderful miss in something there.
Could you make sure this gets posted on? Right there would be the place. Maybe between the two, the glass and the, yeah. Okay, so everybody sees it, okay, thanks.
It's interesting that Hollis's structure definition is a very short one sentence.
Right.
Yeah.
This is, same thing.
It just excludes the boundary wall of camps.
I was thinking, we've got some verbiage in there similar for boundary walls, too. I've put a question mark on that one. Yeah, so the definition of timberhoppers, we need to update. That one.
So do we still have the definition in ours?
Yeah, it differs at the state level a little bit. It does still talk about the two hours, uh, two acres and stuff, but. What they really want to do is the guy cutting all the trees down by the lake in front of his camp isn't doing a timberhoppers.
Oh.
That's really the.
Yeah.
Delete, so we're getting rid of thirty-five.
If.
So we'll keep the timberhoppers in there?
Yes, I just got to make it more compliant with the state's verbiage.
And you're going to check on thirty-three with questions?
Yes, I have a question mark about.
Okay.
Tributary stream.
So where are more restrictive than the state?
Yeah.
Do you recall why we did that?
That's the whole sliding scale for resource protection.
Okay, so that's one of the things that.
The tributary stream?
No, that Gavin is concerned about. Isn't that one of the things on his list, a sliding scale for?
That was his buffer for.
Buffer, yeah.
So there's a sliding scale for resource protection.
And that, will that be shoreline, though, not resource protection? The one Gavin's speaking on?
I'm going to have to find, because that A is not in our ordinance. Two or more continuous acres, what's that, two acres of water body, exclusive rivers, streams, brooks, natural. Getting excessive two acres and. And so he's trying to reference me.
Because, again, this one, there are so many, the definition is pretty much, but then it goes into water set back requirements, applied to tributary streams within the shoreline zone. And then we have four undue hardships that, you know, but only, but if, but the, but the.
Where are you?
This is Berwick.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Just comparing ordinances.
Yeah.
But that one just doesn't have that.
That one, no, that one just doesn't have that, you know.
Yeah, so that A, parentheses.
Yeah.
That verbiage is resource protection for definition of it, I'm just going to see, oh, there it is. Wetland fresh. Okay. So I see where he's moving to, yeah. Yeah, so there's a couple of things, and I think this was two thousand and ten or eleven where our resource protection expanded dramatically. And one of the definitions was forested wetland and freshwater wetland. Because when these maps went out, a lot of people, and Dennis can remember because he was involved at that point in the discussion, a lot of people were looking at the maps and saying, I don't have a wetland behind my house. Because they were thinking, I've got, you know, an area with ducks are swimming for my wetland. A forested wetland has trees all grown through it and it's just real good farm-type soil. And freshwater wetland is more of the swamps, marshes, bogs and things like that. So we're starting at two acres, the state starts at ten. That's where our sliding scale starts. If you've got two acres of wetlands, it's a fifty-foot buffer. And then it expands up till you get to ten acres and you have a two-fifty.
Right.
So I think.
John Hall's by there, of course.
Yes, yeah.
So we want to keep that?
Yeah.
Yeah, I would keep, we want to keep it.
I'd say it's working at this point until we get more.
Any more compliance?
Yeah, yeah, involvement.
Involvement, one you have now.
Thirty-seven is going. And the big thing, when we changed that, we started looking at, whoever this affects gets a note from the town, a letter from the town, that zoning is changing, affecting your land, shoreline zoning. And we started looking at it and we ended up just sending a letter to everybody, everyone in town, that owned property at that time, received a notice.
So.
That's major as well, comment, a letter from the IRS.
Yeah, but most people that call, we look on the maps, it really doesn't apply to you.
And a lot of people that did apply, they just ignored it.
They didn't call.
And they committed to calling later.
Yeah. There was just this one guy, all he needed was a note, they were going to reassess the property.
So we're leaving that whole thing, right?
Yeah.
Just like it is?
Yeah. For thirty-six, thirty-seven, we're going to remove. And the A brings us down to RP.
You know, say, say I agree with you.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, yeah.
And I'm willing to bet I know why.
Yeah. And this got very confusing for years of, we had resource protection in the shoreline and we had resource protection outside of the shoreline zone. It made it fairly complicated to navigate down through, but. Resource protection, definition. I'm sure they don't have a definition of it.
Hollis is, the resource protection says C shoreline zone.
That's what it says in our book as well. It says C four point one.
So at the state level for resource protection, floodplains, that should be in the shoreline zone floodplains. Just called great ponds, rivers, hundred-year floodplain. Two acres of steep slopes, two continuous acres of twenty percent of greatest deep slopes. I like the ten percent states. Cause when you start looking at the state's definition, they get into limited commercial, general development, commercial fisheries, maritime. So we don't have a lot of that stuff. So I'll look at that one more depth all by itself.
The definition by.
Yeah, yeah, mainly because it's just that for resource protection, sliding scale buffer.
That whole thing. And, and what I would like to do is to. Bring it up at our meeting. So that. Let, letting Gavin know. That, you know, we're looking at this stuff and. He wasn't sure he was gonna be here today and he's not.
Yeah, the sun's out.
But yeah.
First, first day all year, the sun's out, so. Um, number thirty-nine, one of the definitions for resource protection is that it's on the maps as a. Waterfowl waiting bird habitat in that area there. The state pulled that out three, four years ago. We quickly talked about it at the board for a minute once and the board didn't really wanna look at removing any of the waterfowl, waterfowl waiting bird habitats as a requirement for RP, so they just wanted to keep the maps as is.
I mean, the whole, I'm just gonna say that's the most big again about it, the whole problem with this resource protection. Is number one, the state put in regulations without even really knowing what the environment is. Instead of putting all these recommendations, this is how it should be. And they really don't know what the heck they're talking about. And the second thing is the town has expanded on that. Again, without really knowing environment, because there's a lot of environments in town that should be in resource protection that aren't on a mass, because we depend on the maps and the state and federal government, which are not. You get like FEMA with a flood plain, I mean, how many years is that then? They're gonna redo that and make them right.
We're going on twenty-two years that I am aware of.
You know what I mean? I mean, it's just absolutely ridiculous.
And we've got new maps over there and they're so excited every time they're bringing them, like, yeah, we're after the, you know, the public hearing and moving forward and we're actually gonna get up.
It never happens.
No, no. And, and like I tell every time, you're in some flood plain area, but that's it, town real, that's realistic. We have Grady's Plain and a few other handsome pond and stuff like, it's all resource protection, so we can't really do anything with it. So I tell them every time, spend your time in Freiburg and Wells, the areas that really have that stuff. But they've been waiting twenty years for theirs too. They've got a lot of abatements and things going against the new maps. I think the new maps are more restrictive than those now, so there's a huge fight.
Yeah.
And we're just.
It's not gonna be settled in my lifetime.
No, no. You just watch every year, no.
Well, we're just, we're just top of the.
Exactly.
Bottom line, you know, and it's not right. But it is what it is.
The bottom line on thirty-nine is? Uh, the board looked at it in the past and we can bring it back up to them again. That would be reducing resource protection. We can ask the board if they're in favor of looking at RP to see if it wants to be reduced. That's the sliding scale, any of that stuff, so I just left it as a circle with a question mark on it.
I. I think it deserves a look, a look at.
At least a look.
At least a look.
Yeah, yeah, once we get a full board back and.
Yeah, yeah. You know, the, I think that this is definitely not a workshop item, this is a. It's been on, on our.
So is this something that we would put on the agenda in detail, notify board members to preview it? Prepare for discussion?
I'd say that's a September-ish type thing, we dragged this all this.
Cause we've got a lot of stuff coming up. It's, it's like when we were working on the comprehensive plan, you had it, look at it and then we started working on it. And I think, yeah, we, we've got to, I just quickly read. Four point, two point one through point four, and I'm going like, wait a minute, going back and then looking at this. Going back and it's like, it's, it's gotta be. We really need to be, you know, know it a little better and, and work it.
At least that would be a byproduct.
Yes.
Of your area with, with, I don't know, zoning.
Exactly. Let's put it this, we could defend what we're saying.
Yeah.
We may not agree or like it, but we can defend why we're, we're doing and saying, yeah.
And make Gavin please.
When we're dealing with the waters and, and things like that, and I don't know, you show up, we have any jurisdiction. What about boat houses?
No.
Yeah, if you, I don't mean a boathouse, if you put your boat, I mean, you're taking a boat and you're building a house on it, name it, I don't know.
Oh, oh, oh. A living.
Yeah.
Virginia, shut the camera off. They, they had that problem down on the seacoast, down in the Great Bay and stuff like that. And they've got a couple that are ghosts down there that have just washed up on shore, cause people have abandoned them. And they're forty feet by sixty feet long and you seen that, there's a lot of molasses and stuff like that too as well, but. Seattle, yeah.
Baltimore has great.
Was that, that a state issue?
I would say if it's off the shore, it's a state issue, but, yeah, yeah. We've got some areas to work on, our docks and, well, I guess if it has a registration on it, it would be a state issue.
But can we say that? I mean, all boats are registered.
Yeah.
So they're, they can be Irish.
Lot of them. But we don't know of anyone having their floating house in any of our leagues.
I do not have one of those.
You don't have one?
I have had some people trying to sell food out of their vehicles or on the ice too. I mean, you'd have the same on the ice. You've got the ice jacks, which used to get huge, but winters have gotten smaller, we've gotten lazier, so they're not as big as they used to be.
I don't like the old concept so much.
No, no.
The ice is getting thinner.
Yes, it is getting thinner.
Although it didn't seem it this year.
So something we don't need to worry about.
I think that's a houseboat versus a boathouse.
Yes, I think it's.
Say a lot of things backwards.
But I knew what you meant.
But we understand you, yeah.
M E C forty?
Right.
So that section is under conditional use, is it's a boat that's bringing you down, basically just saying, once, if it's a lot of juice in the lane juice chat and you go for plane of board, then you're okay there.
Right.
So I think we're good with that. I can cross that off the list of things to. It seems clear to me.
So you disagree with this?
Yeah, I disagree. There is a little confusion on that, just because it's under a heading, a bold heading that a lot of people talked about it.
See if we can get through one page in twenty minutes, fifteen, ten minutes.
Somebody's showing his own. So he's just making a note on forty-one that some of the things are more restrictive than the state, that's probably gonna be the, the lot size and waterfrontage. I think we've got no complaints on those recently, so.
Should we ask Dennis about forty-two?
Yeah.
Dennis, have you anything to say about forty-two?
Well, yeah, I haven't answered the salmon falls with the ocean map, but I'm not classified as.
It's a GPA great pond.
Cause under state law, there's a list of rivers and I have never seen salmon falls in there. So that must be, he must be talking the seventy-five feet.
Right.
So I'll look into that a little bit to see what the options are. And again, we can be more stringent than the state, so. We don't, didn't see A below. Yeah, he's kinda looking at merging that A into the paragraph above.
Yeah.
We'll look into that.
Put it into the.
Yeah.
Just a condition as a permit or the definition?
I've just cleaned up that, that section in the ordinance, merging that A up with it.
Take the A up and the A off.
Get rid of the A, yeah.
Get rid of the A and just make it a continuation.
Yeah.
Okay.
Mostly getting rid of that highlighted section and then looking at that. Health Human Services, we just clean on that. Basically adding the word health.
Yeah.
Uh, I've, oh, docks. That's a whole, no, no. It is optional. So docks is optional. I know some towns that have walked away from them and anything goes. I've got two calls on my callback list to talk docks with people. We don't, we, we are very loose on our definitions of it. I wish it gave a specific size and. Plan of board talked about this about fifteen years ago and some of the members said, you wanna be the dock cop? I'm like, absolutely not. But the docks are getting bigger and bigger and bigger. And at the end of the dock is a sixteen by sixteen area with a built-in bench, barbecue, and you've got the boat lifts and five, six fingers out of it.
Which sounds you're up in the middle of the way.
Yeah, yeah.
That's where everybody meets for the weekend parties.
So the board said, don't even touch it, don't even look at it. The next meeting, the members came back and said, we're riding around this lake this weekend and really looked at the docks. Sure, we, we gotta look at these. We've gotta do something about this, cause they're just getting bigger and bigger, they're getting out of control. And we never really looked into it much more. The biggest problem we get for complaints is there's no setback from a dock from the property line, so whoever gets their dock in first puts it right at the edge of the property line, then they put their potty badge on that side of the dock, now you're in front of somebody's property. And I mean, if you've got a fifty foot lot, you just took out twelve, thirteen feet with your potty boat, it becomes an issue.
It's always been civil. We've always told them, we don't have a setback in civil, so docks is something we're going to have to look at
to figure out, we wanna regulate them, let's throw the thing right out. Currently, it says permanent or floating needs a conditional use from you guys, so those rafts that you swing up, swing up to are floating. Most times I'll instruct somebody, if you put it on legs and it's temporary, uh, some of the verbiage we talked about before was removed during the non-boating season. You pull it out during the non-boating season, cause most of them talk, it's only in six months, or you're removing it this or that. And the big thing is they pull it out for a day and put it back in, start the calendar all over. I think, you know, the non-boating season is the way to call, you, you're taking them out, they're temporary. So if you've gotten, so it's a temporary dock, now it's reasonable size, cause you gotta put it in, take it out, put it in, take it out. A lot of times the, the water goes out so far, they just leave the docks right in, so then they can get away with a much bigger dock, but.
Mostly some of the issues that Wilson Lake people came and was concerned about with.
Yeah.
The floating things on.
Yeah.
People borrowing their boats out there.
Yeah.
Swimming off things that will anchor out.
Yeah, cause now the rafts, you can blow them up and they've got slides on them and swing sets and it's just a huge thing.
You have two thousand dollars in and get your own plane line.
Is that what they cost?
Yeah. Yeah, I've seen some, well, we've got a couple on square, but I've seen some wooden basem that just, what do you mind?
So when we again.
Trappies.
Exactly. As we get into September, October, we'll bring docks back up to the board to see what they wanna do.
I go up my neighborhood square every, put his in.
Is it getting heavier every year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do I still do it for one beer?
Oh, boy, I'd go up for two.
Yeah.
One to start with and one when you're finished. The, no, we, as, we change from a wooden floating dock to an aluminum dock. And the inserts, I mean, I can pick them up, they're, they're light, they're easy. And the aluminum construction itself, two people can easily do it. But the getting in there and, you know, you have to take the screws off and on the bolts and you, you're gonna drop two at least.
And the water's cold.
And the water's cold. I mean, it's just not, you know.
And at some point, the state or federal government has decided that aluminum is killing something in the water.
Oh, of course, of course. Let's go back to hanging, getting our trees back on the shoreline, hanging a rope over the branch. Grabbing it and jumping in the water.
So five point two zero, which was his forty-seven comment, clearing or moving vegetation, we do need to look at that a little bit more. When the state makes these rules up, they're in a cubicle somewheres or, or in a board or director's meeting. Uh, they come up with all these great ideas, so they, they were exempting hazardous and storm damaged trees. We kinda kept it in and looked at that as part of our permitting process, because you can have a beautiful pine tree and in four months it can be a hazard. If you know what to do with it, it's very easy to kill that tree that you don't, that we don't allow you to cut, and all of a sudden be a safety hazard. So we've kept the safety hazards in as still part of the, I mean, if a hurricane comes and wipes them all out, that's obviously the down on the ground would work with you on that, but the hazardous trees will.
One, one of the things that, that I, I don't know, I seem to have seen a lot of it lately, is these dead and dying trees. Halfway on the ground and the whole, things like that. I mean, they're, we're not in the part of the country where that would be, you would be doing nothing but going out, knocking on people's door. Telling them to get rid of it, oh, because it just takes one spark.
Oh, yeah.
And there goes the neighborhood.
There was a section in there for fire prevention or something, for the wildland fires.
Yeah, and I mean, to clean it out and get those dead trees out, get that, all that stuff removed because of the, the safety factor. And, and the way some of the lakes are, you don't have, you know, you don't have room to, to save your house. You know, you probably don't have room to get your car out of the driveway in some cases. So there's some sort of, you know, hazard beside, not just the tree falling on you, but creating a hazard to the general public.
So.
So can we put this in shoreline zone, forty-six?
Forty-six is removed, uh, no.
No, that's what it says.
Uh, with the repeal of the timberhoppers, then forty-six removed. Forty-seven, I picked up the hazardous tree stuff.
Right.
So trees are something definitely we, we need to look at next year. Forty-eight. He's talking about, we need to be certified by the DEP to do excavation work in the shoreline zone. He's thinking of bringing that in.
Well, that's been lawful.
Yeah, and we have a class next Wednesday. Yeah, and we have a class next Wednesday if anybody wants.
So that would be on our shoulders to enforce that?
What we do is, we have a sign-off, somebody signs if they're doing excavation work, and the big house isn't a problem, it's the generator, people, the gas tanks, things like that. So we have them sign something saying, I'm the shoreline zoning guy. The problem with the houses is, you dig the foundation, September, October, pour the foundation, those dirt guys don't come back until March, April, May. By then, if you've got silk fence up, the building contractors have driven over it several times, they've run over it, it's just not being maintained, so our sign-off really says, you are the person, it is two seventy-five a day penalty for discharging the car up to twenty-five hundred, so occasionally we'll have somebody call up and say, yeah, I'm not that person anymore, I'm no longer on the project, so we'll have to get them back. And it's really just, who do we call if we have an issue? When we see heavy rains coming, we'll know specific sites, just go out and make sure it's all being maintained.
How about the roads?
Roads are the worst offenders.
No, no, that's what I mean, but, I mean, nobody knows spies you, for example.
Big huge washout.
Or you're gonna have to get, if they're doing work.
Yeah, yeah, so roads are exempt, but.
Road, but they aren't exempt from the state law, are they?
They are exempt from needing permitting work and stuff like that, they still need to be in compliance with erosion control laws.
They still have to have the certification so they can go.
I wonder if I should, I should double check, see if I wrote commission and certify and tell them that class is coming up.
Well, Brenda and I are gonna be there.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm not one of them.
It's, it's gonna be here, and it's here.
Are you coming back?
Well, I'm, I'm not going to, I'm not going for, you know.
What?
A certification, more or less potty. Brenda, not Brenda, Leslie is going for certification, she's, she's going to, she has somebody in mind, she's gonna ask who is working on a project that could be, she could be part of his project, if he agrees to it.
So they're not under the auspices of you?
No permits are required, but they still have to be if they're doing the work. Usually what they're doing is cleaning up from storm damage. And just like anything, when that erodes from this storm, it erodes from the storm before the storm, we just fix it. Versus looking at. A major repair or stay on fixing what has caused the problem.
This is true, I have my vest and I have my hat, we went to go in my driveway. We've had arrows hit the house.
So you don't know, unless somebody files a complaint with, say like me, for example, and I was gonna go up to somewhere on Lakeside Drive, and I don't have my certification available to.
Since you're exempt from a permit, we wouldn't be tracking you down if there was an issue. Thank you, have a good day. You wouldn't be exempt from fines and penalties and stuff.
It'd just be a state thing.
Exactly. Number fifty, he was picking up the zoning board, they make a decision, there should be a verbiage in there for reconsidering the decision within a specific amount of time, because we call that big old chicken.
Don't, didn't we just talk about this?
That we should have a reconsider.
That, that, okay, we're, we are agreed, here's what we're doing, this is it, but we have fifteen days to change our mind. We just talked about that.
Somebody asked that question at the.
Yeah.
Upstairs?
Right.
Paul Boy.
Exactly.
On the ordinances.
For a planning board or zoning board?
Municipal, municipal ordinances.
Oh.
That, indeed, asked a question about.
Yes, it was, and it's like a demo part, you know.
Yeah, yeah, well, when we had that for the last zoning board, is to reconsider, well, do we notify everybody again? Are we not notifying everybody? Do we charge a fee, pay for putting it in the paper and notifying the mothers, is it? So there was a hearing to reconsider, but that was denied, so we didn't have a meeting to, to reconsider. They only decided whether they wanted to, and they said no, so we were able to look at that. But that is a good point, we should have definitely, that should say, within so many days, and if we do reconsider, then we have to notify the appellant or the person, because quite often it isn't the person that's come in for the permits, it could be somebody else.
Well, and you also never know when you're gonna get other information.
Yeah, yeah.
The first, the first hammer goes down and the first neighbor calls and.
Our permits say, if you stop within thirty days from a permit, this will be your own risk, because there's thirty days of a window of knowing, you're supposed to post a permit for thirty days and have it out, that way everybody knows. We wanna get our website back, I have a lot of information up there, but, when I saw the call, like, I think we're on thirty phone calls a day alone, not including the emails, so it's hard to. That's all I have.
Okay. That's all I have, so I'm going to close this workshop. Thank you, Virginia.
Okay.
Thanks for coming.